Is there, can I get some direction, is it just a public? Your Commissioner Milton, your question about it being advertised and that sort of thing, within the next two weeks, that might be problematic. Can I understand, get just a more clear direction on exactly what we need to accomplish so that we don't come back and waste anybody's time?
I would at least ask that you reach out to them, it's all, not necessarily have another public hearing type meeting.
Okay.
I'm not asking to start over, just reach out to her group, give them the opportunity to provide their input. And the same with tree and appearance. And Mayor, if I may, if I still have the floor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to amend my motion to include language that we defer this project or this decision until July 22nd and that we ask the petitioner or the developer to modify his bond from a three to a five-year bond.
Second.
You okay with that? Okay.
Those are two separate motion items, they're not mundane to each other. We really need to take care of that bond issue first before we deal with the continuance until the 20th, with the 22nd meeting.
So does that mean withdraw my previous motion?
Yeah, when you added that about the bond.
Yes, sir.
That's not germane to a motion to defer. That needs to be a separate motion, but once you defer it, you're not going to have that opportunity.
I understand.
So do that first and then do your motion to continue.
Would it matter if we just added that next?
Oh, no, you can do that next meeting.
Do it on the 22nd.
Okay.
Go back to my original.
Right, okay. All right. Any other questions? Comments? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Everybody in favor, raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously, recognizing Mr. Irvin is recused from the process. Okay, Mr. Irvin, you are back into the meeting. We'll move on to item number 11, reports for advisory boards and committees. We have minutes from the Economic Development Advisory Committee and from the Transportation Advisory Committee. Next item is a consent agenda, items 12A through E. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I was just catching up, man.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion should be made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item, unfinished business. Is 13A, consider adoption resolution special assessment for Acacia Street and the Streamside subdivision. CJ, do you have any further information for us?
Yes, sir. All the petitioners here did sign to take their names off the petition, so we no longer have enough to proceed.
Okay, so we do not have a valid petition, therefore there is no action for us under 13A.
Good.
Okay. We'll move on to item 13B, receive an update on the downtown mobility plan, street scape design and intersection improvements for Matthew Station Street and North Trade Street. Susan Habina Willard, Willard is here with us, I'm sorry.
Sorry, no offense taken. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Good evening. As always, I am happy to be presenting with you tonight the knowledge that is in my head and is now on the screen for you, and Lori has the slides to be made available to you after tonight. Providing an update per your request on three town-led transportation planning and design projects in the downtown area. I know you are all so excited about this, and so this, tonight, I'm just going to give you kind of status update on all three, and then receive any questions that you have on them. First is the intersection of Trade, North Trade Street and Matthew Station Street. The next project is the downtown mobility and parking study, roughly in the area of the large circle there. And the third, I apologize, the third is the Trade Street Streetscape, which goes from the Greenway on South Trade all the way up to 51, and also includes portions of East Charles Street and Matthew Station Street. These three projects all have overlapping goals, they all strive to maintain the vibrancy and create a cohesive and attractive downtown, and therefore we have coordination and collaboration among all the staff involved in the three projects, all the consultants involved in the three projects, and of course, the stakeholders and the community as we have public input on all the projects. We of course mention all three to ensure everyone knows kind of all these overlapping So in more detail, first project, Trade Street, Matthew Station Street intersection. Just want to refresh your memory, this is, the deliverable on this is the survey in preliminary design, preliminary design only. When we talked about this last year, we had a hard time coming to a consensus on what was preferred for this intersection. It was hard for me to answer a lot of your questions without the survey, the detailed survey, because of the extreme elevations in this area. So we had a kickoff meeting on this project in March, the survey was finally delivered in June. By the end of this week, the consultant will deliver to staff a draft plan, will provide comments, and then the consultant will get ready to present to you the second meeting in August on this. So that one is coming up quickly. Second project, downtown mobility and parking study, deliverable on this project is a recommendations plan for, I have getting people to downtown destinations, but in and around downtown, right? Our kickoff meeting on this was also March of 2019, and the major milestone just passed, a lot of you participated in that charade, it was a three-day process, and we appreciate all the participation that we received from the board in that. We're moving, on schedule to a draft plan will be delivered to staff in August. The consultant will receive comments from that, will take it through all the advisory committees, the development review team, transportation advisory committee, probably planning board, we'll see that too. The draft plan will then be revised and be ready for a board presentation in November, first meeting in November probably. And third downtown project is the Trade Street Streetscape. That is, the deliverable on that is designs for what we're calling curb-to-building placemaking, so not within the pavement, but outside the pavement from the curb, including the sidewalks up to the fronts of the buildings, on again, Trade Street, South Trade Street, North Trade Street, parts of Matthew Station Street and East Charles Street. We're hoping to kick that off after the mobility plan is adopted, because some of the concepts in the mobility plan will affect this work. But as you can see, their major milestone just passed as well, we received drone photography for Trade Street, which is, this is an example, this photo, of the photography received, and the photography is also being used in the, by another consultant in the mobility plan. So again, this overlapping of projects, this consultant has been great to work with because they've been, had meetings and then told to wait, and then did the drone, and then gave the information, and they're waiting again, but they're very understanding that we want to make sure we have a good vision for the downtown with the mobility plan before they get started on these designs. We're hoping, we're going to aim for a four-month process on that, our design process on that, to have a draft plan by March of 2020, again, take it through the committees, and then present to the board in May of 2020. To recap, the immediate next steps, August, next month, you'll see a presentation on the intersection project, couple months later, presentation on the mobility study, and then the following month, kickoff the streetscape project. That is my brief and detailed presentation for you tonight. Any questions on the status of these projects or about any of these three projects?
Any questions for Susan? Oh, Mr. Miller?
Thank you. Susan, the first August intersection, are you referring to Matthew Station Street and Trade?
That's right.
Okay. And, all right, that's all, thank you.
Mr. Milton?
Thank you, Mayor. Susan, I've had a couple citizens, a few ask me about this same update. Is there a way you guys can get together and make this available, or put together a little news release, or post, or something to let the citizenry know basically this update? Can we do that?
Yes, we can do that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Oh, Dana is here, okay. Next item is 13C, receive information on Sam Knoll Road multi-use path. Dana?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. We are going to talk briefly about Sam Knoll Road EB 5783, which is a multi-use path. I presented this as a part of a larger overall review. I know you've heard about this project for several years now, and we want to give you an update. So the project is on the north side of town, on north of 74, in that little orange area. And, you know, on a larger picture, you'll see that at the northern section of it, it's Crown Point Elementary School, and at the bottom is William Street. Initially, this was a longer section, it went further down to Rice Road, but because there is a NC DOT project, the 74 parallel routes, they're going to be doing a portion of it, so it was great because it shrank our portion of this project. You know, why are we doing this project? And I want to tell you why we're doing it before we explain how the costs have gone up. The importance of this corridor right now is there is no multi-use path, no sidewalk, there's no connectivity here. We've got an elementary school here with about 500 kids, and zero of them walk to school. We've got Erwin's Creek Greenway that is coming, that Mecklenburg County is developing, and that should be completed by about 2021. And then we have multiple developments that are going in to this area. And I know one, at least one of these developments is keenly aware of what's going on in the Erwin's Creek Greenway, and is trying to integrate their plans. In addition, like I mentioned before, we've got, on the south, we've got 74 that is creating, you know, the parallel routes as well. And we have a lot of commercial uses down there, so connecting all these residential uses, we've got religious institutions, we've got elementary school, we have a lot of things that could really be connected, and people could really be using other modes of transportation than just vehicles if we can create this multi-use path. So, let's talk about costs. So we've heard a theme tonight, as I've been listening to all the presenters, about escalating costs of construction, and that is, in fact, the case with a lot of these projects that are being constructed for the sidewalks. I went to a statewide meeting, and people from Fayetteville, and Raleigh, and Asheville, and everywhere in between where they're talking about the escalation of construction prices. So, we originally asked for, and this is in the STIP, so the State Transportation Improvement Program, $1.2 million for this sidewalk. And you can see that the federal match and our local match. Well, the updated costs, and we worked very closely, and you can read the memo, with, we went through a selection team, and we picked a consultant, we have obviously not signed agreement with a consultant yet, but they did a tremendous amount of work to figure out the cost for us. We were like, we cannot go, move forward unless we have a good understanding of what the real cost is going to be. And so that's when they came back and gave us the updated 2.2 million dollar cost. It would be, the federal portion is the 1.7 and change, and our portion, the town, the local match, would be here, the 442,000, I am so tired, so, 400,000 plus dollars, let's leave it at that. Okay, the CIP, I know this is something you all are really interested in, because we've talked a lot about the CIP. You all, I believe, Becky, correct me if I'm wrong, second quadrant, over 50% of folks thought that this was a very important project. And so if you look at what is currently in the CIP, we've got 80,000 for fiscal year '20, and then 160 in fiscal year '21. So this is going to be the updated cost. So you've got about 139 and change, and over 300,000 for fiscal year '21. Overall, it's about $200,000 in additional costs for this project. And so, you know, the, what we're recommending, and these are the asks, are to have the town manager execute a contract for the multi-use path for Kimbley Horn once we get the okay to proceed from NC DOT. To appropriate, and this is a big piece of it, is to appropriate, obviously, the dollars, the whole chunk, so that, remember, this is a reimbursement program, this isn't a grant, we have to pay for it, and then we get reimbursed, all but 20%. And then number three is probably the most important part, which is, the reason I wanted to bring this tonight is because CRTPO, which is the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization, they are having a call for projects come August, and we can apply for those additional monies at the call for projects. The great thing about this call for projects is that it's only for CRTPO, it's not a statewide competition, and they're more likely to support a project that's already in the hopper, and we already have this project going, and they've shown in the past that they want to support that. And we haven't come back to them with this project and asked for additional funds before. So this is a first time asking, we're hoping that Malcolm Wood, we've gotten our numbers right, and, you know, will be able to execute the project with these, with the amount we have shown. So those are the three asks specifically for this evening, and so I'm happy to answer any questions, I know I've gone through this quickly, so.
Mr. Higgin.
Yes, tell us again, what is the time difference between the original cost and the updated cost?
What is the?
How long, how long of a time does that encompass?
Three years. Yeah, I was not hearing.
We better hurry and authorize it before it doubles again. My gosh, that's going up quick.
One of the things I'd like to add, I think the cushion here, if that's the right word, maybe that's not the right word, is 40% contingency. So I think it illustrates the volatility of where we're at, and they're now making us put in a 40% contingency, which is 475,000 bucks. So hopefully, right, that's not going to be, have to be used.
Right.
And it'll be a lower number, but that's probably the cushion in there that.
And that's a requirement from CRTPO, went through this great, went through this huge exercise to implement new policies, because everything was coming under, was so low, I mean, their estimates, you know, when communities were doing their cost estimations. So that is why we have such a large contingency now.
John?
Out of the box, does anybody think about value engineering it down to like nine foot wide and taking all that cubic footage of, cubic yards of concrete out of the deal or something?
Hand it to Susan.
That's a great question, coming from someone in the industry, and we've already value engineered it by shortening the distance, which helped, and I think we're not going to see appreciable savings by cutting out one or two feet, and what we will see is a construction of the usage of the sidewalk, because 10 feet, most communities are going to 14 feet for multi-use paths. We are holding firm on 10 feet as the most economical width for the town Matthews.
Let me ask you a question about the CARPO funds. Where would that million dollars come from? What fund would the million dollars come from?
We would be applying, so they have a pot of money, and they're combining a bunch of pots, so we don't know what we'd get, we'd probably wind up with DA dollars, but they, they're trying to make one call, and they'll assign the dollars as they, whatever is best that fits for the project.
So has the balance of the project been funded already?
No, so we, the balance of the project, we are, for the August call, so CRTPO is having a call for projects in August, we want to submit that million dollars, if, you know, we get permission tonight, that extra money that we need, we need to submit it in that call.
Okay.
And we're very optimistic.
So we're going to, you're asking to authorize the manager to proceed, but we're still operating, I mean, just, we're operating at risk for getting the money approved. Okay. Want to go through the TCC as well?
Oh, yes, of course.
Okay. Do we have a motion? I'll make a motion that we authorize town manager to award and execute a contract for the planning and design of a multi-use path on Sam Knoll Road, which would be project EB 5783 to Kimbley Horn Associates, and work proceeding with NC DOT authorization is acquired.
A second.
What about?
Okay, we have a motion, the second. Mr. Milton?
Do you need to include all three?
I was going to, I was going to make a second motion and a third motion. I don't think the third one needs a motion, because we're going to, that'll go to the CARPO, but.
I think we may. Yeah, I think we need a letter of support.
Okay.
So as long as we still get a letter of support.
Okay. So let's do the first one with that motion first.
I'm second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So would someone like to make the next motion?
I'll make the motion to appropriate funds from the general fund in the amount of 448,257, with all but 89,651 being reimbursed through the grant.
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And then Dana, for the number three, you say you need a letter of support?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So can we do that through direction to the manager, or?
Yeah, and we just need to make sure that it states that we're financially committed to the project.
Okay.
Do you want me to pen that letter and give it to someone to sign?
Yeah, I think, you know, it would be the manager to sign that, saying that the commitment's been made. Thank you very much. All right, next item is, under new business, consider road resurfacing contract, CJ?
I made a PowerPoint presentation. Is there a Looney Tunes part of this PowerPoint? Resurfacing contract. Looney Tunes real fast.
All right, Mayor and Board, thanks for staying with me so long. Nobody's asleep yet, that's good.
You've been here a little while, too.
As you all are well aware, we have spent the last several years working on pavement preservation, that portion of the curve that's up here, keeping our good pavements in good condition. Unfortunately, as you're also aware, as we concentrate our money here, these roads continue to decline, and we've come to a point now where it's time to take care of the roads that are closer to the bottom and bring them back up where we can continue to maintain them in good condition. As you're also aware, that's an expensive proposition compared to pavement preservation. So this is what we were working with this year. We had the town's budget roughly for the resurfacing for this year, which has been held actually for a couple years, over a couple years, doing some pavement preservation, holding on to some, till we could get to this point. So we have roughly $2 million saved up. We have the streamside special assessment that's included in the roads that are part of this contract, and it can be pulled out if it needs to be. So that, this contract is made so that we can add or delete roads as needed. And then the third is Crestdale Road Funds, which are the 300,000, part of the 300,000 that we received from the state, based on Reverend Whitley's talkings with the state DOT. The reason I'm including those for the resurfacing is because the Crestdale Road would normally not be funded as part of this program, it hasn't reached the point where we would normally do that. However, with these funds available, I think that is a good use of the funds. Of course, I do want to take time and speak with the Reverend and the community to make sure that is how they want to spend the funds. So again, that can be taken out if that's not the case. Assuming all that is the case, we're working with a budget of around 2.3 million dollars. So the bid results, May 21st, we had a bid, we had only had two bidders. North Carolina state law, we could not open. It's re-advertised and opened on June 4th with two bidders, which we are allowed to in the second bid opening. The low bid was 3.9 million dollars, which, I'm slow, but is significantly more than the budget of 2.2. So what I did is went back and rewrote the contract to lessen the costs. The way I did that was to revise some of the work to make it more efficient or cost-effective for the contractor to do, and also move some of the risk back to the town. Now, moving risk back to the town means that I really keep, want to keep some money to the side to cover any eventualities. July 2nd, we had three bidders, low bid with the alternative was roughly 500,000 less than the last one, so it did save roughly 500,000, but is still well over our budget. So what I've done is revised the number of streets that we are looking to resurface this year and reclaim to these areas here. We have Matthews Commons, Cruz Road, Bubbling Well, the section of West McDowell, Matthews Plantation, just the front portion of it, Crestdale Road, which is using those funds we talked about, plus Selma Burke and George Clay, which are in very poor condition and would rate it anyway, Kimway Drive, Kimway Court, Brandywine, Buckton Lane, which is a short cul-de-sac in that neighborhood that's performed not very well compared to the rest of the neighborhood, and the streamside subdivision that we discussed previously. These are the roads, it's, I should have that in your memo as well, that we're starting with. This may not be the end, based on how the contract is working out, and based on recommendations from the pavement condition survey that we have starting next month, I plan to have additional roads added to this. So with all of these roads, my estimate based on the bids is roughly 1.7 million, that leaves about a $500,000 cushion to either cover rising costs or to be able to add new roads in as needed.
CJ, just a point of clarification, we got $250,000 for Crestdale.
I'm sorry, yes.
Not, not 300?
Sorry, sorry.
Okay, no, we did.
Wishful thinking.
I just want to make sure Reverend Whitley knew what the amount was, so.
CJ, let me ask you a question about, can you go back to the Crestdale, go back to the numbers you had? I didn't quite understand what you said. We got 250,000 from the state for Crestdale.
Correct.
Are you saying this 150 is coming from that?
Correct.
Pot, well, how does that, I'm not sure I understand how that's going to look at the improvements.
So, it's my understanding that the funds are to be used for betterments in the Crestdale area.
Right.
Part of that is realigning some of the sidewalk, part of it is resurfacing the roads, part of it is widening out some of the driveways to some of the businesses so they don't have issues running off the road, and these are the types of things that I wanted to talk to Reverend Whitley about, but haven't had a chance, because we just opened the bids, so I didn't know what we were working with.
Okay, well, I think with that, the community has some specific things that they want to make sure get done on that road, so we need to.
Correct.
Before we go off and spend that, we need to make sure that we're.
Absolutely.
Meeting those needs.
And that's why this contractor's written so flexibly, so we can take those out if the community does not want that.
Okay. All right, because I thought this was in addition to the 250.
No, sir.
So when you talked about the 300,000, I thought you were.
Correct. And also to further clarify, this is only for Crestdale Road. The George Clay and Selma Burke are part of the overall $2 million budget. Because of the state of those roads, they qualified. And one other thing, all we're looking for is for the board to approve us moving forward with the contract, and I'll bring back updates to the board of where we are with it, and what roads we do work, we are going to work on.
All right, Mr. Higgin.
CJ, the memo that's in our packet talks about a bid amount. CJ, the memo that's in our packet talks about a bid amount and a bid amount with the alternate?
Yes.
I thought the alternate would be less expensive and the memo shows it more expensive?
So that, there's the base bid and then the bid plus the alternate. So that alternate's roughly 20-some thousand dollars, so add that to the base bid, that's what the bid plus the alternate is.
What exactly is the alternate? Isn't it the alternate method of milling and?
No, so I should have explained that better. The alternate is a portion of the work in streamside subdivision, so the part that was not covered with the unit rate prices.
So it's like 270? Okay, I got it, I got it.
Mr. Miller?
CJ, the bridge over troubled water down there at Weddington and Pleasant Plains, is that Blythe Construction?
No, that's Blythe Development, separate company.
Yeah, okay.
And I mean that seriously.
I believe you, I believe you. I just, I'd hate to see our whole town tore up for an extra year.
Blythe Construction is part of lane construction.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to allow the town manager to execute the contract with Blythe Construction. Staff will limit the roads reclaimed to stay within Public Works budget.
I'm going to make a comment here, I'm still struggling with the Crestdale Road Funds. I'd like to go back and revisit that this week. Maybe we can get together and talk about that. So, I'll move forward with the motion at this point. Okay, any other comments? All right, all those in favor of the motion, all those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, CJ. Next item is mayor's report, I don't have a report, attorney's report?
No report, Commissioner Mayor.
Mr. Manager, do you have your report?
Yes, sir, I'd say just two things, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. One of them is the crosswalk on McDowell Street. I really appreciate the conversation, you know, we're trying to make that speed hump there on McDowell safe, Matthews alive. I think Commissioner Miller was the most interested in it. I didn't hear any other comments, but I assume the board's like, understands where he's come from, supports kind of this creativity, he's a good thing. So what we'd like to do, and Matthews alive is coming up, so we want to make that crosswalk more visible. So Dana Skujanki and I talked about, her idea was that you could get some temporary paint. So what we do is do some temporary paint out there to make it more lively and to make it more visible, it's really to make it more visible. And then with this notion in mind, okay, what can we do creatively for that crosswalk going forward? And we'd spend more time really thinking that through, you know, gaining consensus and taking that next step. Does anybody have any concerns with that plan, action plan? So the second thing is columns. So the columns are outside, they're not finished yet. We have been working very hard with the contractor and we've been using Commissioner Urban's architectural expertise to kind of lead us along here because it's hard to back up with some of the decisions we're talking about making and we've put together some textured, textured finish that they would actually spray on and Commissioner Urban has them in front of them, Commissioner Urban, two different colors, colors you got to figure it out, but, so the question is, how would this look? You know, the old columns are smooth, so the question is, how would this textured column look, you know, whatever, six months from now when it's up? Commissioner Urban, do you have a perspective or some advice that you'd give us on, you know?
Here's my thought process. The original sample that we were shared was a baked-in-the-factory, pre-cast stone look to it and it was fine if we could get the color we wanted. But the fact that that didn't come to fruition and we were looking at alternatives for a, what I would call a field-applied application, does not render the same texture or feel or look. And in my gut, if it was my project, I would turn around and say, I don't want to go there because I would be disappointed and I think the client would be disappointed, which is us. So my, my thought process is, unless we get exactly what the original texture was, factory applied, we go back to the columns as a smooth rendition as they were and just leave well enough alone.
So we would, we would keep the columns smooth, what they are, what they're currently are, of course, they have to be completed.
They'd be prepped, sealed, caulked and bonded.
So I think the question to the board is, does anybody have any concerns about that? Or are you comfortable with us moving forward with the smooth columns?